Well, thank you guys so much for coming out tonight. I'm so excited to see everybody out here and engage. There is a lot of work to be done and you know, it's great to have community input in the process. And I'm just so happy to be a part of this process. My name is Denise Butler. Yes, right here on my name tag in case you can't see it. And I work with an organization called Acer, which is African Career Education and Resource, Inc. And we are one of the organizations of many who sit on a coalition that decided to put this forum together. We thought you, the community, needed to have this opportunity to find out who these people are that want to represent you, that want to take your issues and have a voice in what needs to be done here in this community. So we do have representatives from the West and Central District. But to start the night off, we are going to have those who are running for office in the Central District. We had eight candidates here today and because of the space and we had to work with what we're given, we couldn't have everybody up front at the same time. I know that's what you were looking forward to having everybody up here at the same time. But because of space, we have these folks up here for right now for representing the Central District. So it's gonna go, you have your cards, you are going to put your questions on those cards. We're gonna take those cards with those questions, just review them, you know, for spelling and language and stuff like that. And make sure that everybody's question does get asked and answered correctly tonight. We will have those questions presented to our moderator and therefore he will pose those questions to the candidates. And each candidate will get a certain length of time, equally amount of time, to answer those questions and address all your concerns tonight. If you haven't had the opportunity, please help yourself some sandwiches, grab something to eat. We want you to be full so you can ask these great questions. You know, don't spare them anything, they need to be able to answer to you tonight. And then some great house, quick housekeeping, right through those doors, if you go and make it to your right, you'll see the bathroom, male and female, whichever one you decide to use, it's up to you. It's your choice. Again, thanks everybody for coming. We thank the candidates for taking their time out of their busy schedule and their campaign to be here tonight to listen to all of you guys. Thank you very much. And now I'm gonna pass it over to Carol, our moderator.
I care aware I'm your temporary moderator this evening. And Wayne Doe is the official moderator, but I just talked to him and he's about eight minutes away. So I'm gonna start the forum out and then he will continue as soon as he arrives. This evening, we will be timing very closely the candidates' answers. They are going to have two minutes to each give an introduction and then they will have one minute to answer your questions that you submit. Whenever you're ready to submit a question, just raise your hand and somebody will come over and take it from you. And then there's three people who will be answering it. We have a moderating team and our team consists of the moderator and the people who ask the questions. They are now Sheena, Hussein, and Yaumei Zhang, the end, and Christina Chen in the middle. And they will just take turns asking your questions. Your questions will also be reviewed before they're submitted to make sure that they're clear or if two are very similar, they might be combined. Now, the first thing, one of the things I want, before we get started, I wanted to mention is that we would like to hold your applause and not applause for any of the particular candidates because that will take time away from them answering questions and it's really important that we use the time to hear from them. At the end of the forum, there will be an opportunity for you to applause the candidates. Well, I'd like to introduce the three candidates who are here from the Central District. We are covering the Central District first in about a 45-minute forum and then we will cover the West District. The three candidates are James Jackson, George Lassard, and Mark Maida. We're very glad to have them here this evening and we would like them to give us their introductory statement now, starting with James Jackson. And they're allowed two minutes. What will happen is when there's 15 seconds left, you'll get a sign, 15-second sign. And when your time is up, then you'll get the stop sign. Okay, you can start.
First off, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. This means a lot to me, I'm sure to George and to Mark as well. It shows that you all care about the issues that are happening. My name is James Jackson, as Carol mentioned. We are running for a city council in the Central District. I was born and raised in Minneapolis, went to Minneapolis Public Schools, I went to University of St. Thomas where I have my bachelor's degree in business law, ethics and finance, went to Hamlin University for my MBA in international management and a conflict resolution certificate from Hamlin School of Law. Prior to city council, I was a part of the Citizen Long-Range Commission. I sat on the Northwest Cable Commission and I was a board director for Northwest Channel 12, Community Television. I'm doing city council and I'm running for this position for a multitude of reasons. One, I live here. This is the community that I represent. This is the community that I love. This is a community that I'm growing with. Michelle, who will be here soon, my fiancee, we are gonna have a family in this community. And as a leader of my family and as a leader in my community, I need to provide the best possible future for our children. And that doesn't just happen in our home, that happens where we live at. That happens outside of our home, that happens everywhere that this community touches. So I want to thank everyone for coming out and for me, it's not about race, it's not about being a particular person or demographic. I'm actually gonna say, if you're gonna vote for me because I'm an African-American male, don't vote for me. If you're gonna vote for me because I'm younger, don't vote for me. Vote for me because I believe in what you all believe in and what you want to hear. That's a fresh perspective on city council. I think those guys are doing a phenomenal job on that hall. What I can do is offer a different perspective from a different generation. And I know Carol, Kathy just gave me that 15 seconds, so I can talk all day because this is something I care about, but thank you all so much.
Next we'll hear from George Lassard.
Hi, I'm George Lassard. If those of you out there wonder, am I related to anybody in Minnesota that's a Lassard? Answer's no. I'm a transplant. I came this way to the city of Brooklyn Park by way of being a veteran in the military. Living overseas, eight years in Japan, two years in Guam, 18 months in Afghanistan. I bring an understanding of the communication aspect for different cultures, which is why I think here in Brooklyn Park, I truly enjoy it. I have the opportunity to live anywhere with my job. I chose to stay here. We've been here for 14 years, resident of Brooklyn Park. Started off in the Candlewood area, decided to be more than what I was, again, outside of my house. I was raising a family, married 22 years with one son. We decided, what can we do to make this place better? We got involved in our cul-de-sac, that was good. When then we started getting involved in Candlewood area. I served five years on the planning commission where I fostered a few ideas with local businesses to reach back into our students, into the colleges and say, you know what, if you need a OJT job, come work with us. CarMax was our first opportunity that said they would listen and they provided those resources. When you look at why I'm running, please look in the mirror. I'm running for you folks, I'm running for me to make a difference. Diversity is one of the best things we have, but I think we need to do more with it. Looking at light rail, you've got light rail, you've got five stops coming up. We can't stop light rail from coming, but why don't we use those stops to call out who we are, who we are in a diverse world. So I appreciate the opportunity to touch base with you and look forward to the questions.
My name is Mark Maida. I've been a resident of City of Brooklyn Park for 34 years. I grew up in City of Crystal and then my parents moved to the southwest corner. I now live in the northeast corner. After having our first house in Brooklyn Park, when we had a lot of places to pick to choose, we picked to move again into Brooklyn Park. Like I found out, basically my whole neighborhood is everybody who came from Brooklyn Park to Brooklyn Park. I happen to be a 40-degree person from Augsburg College. I'm on the Brooklyn Park Paid-on-Call Volunteer Fire Department for 18 years. While living in Brooklyn Park, I happened to notice a house that I actually thought in the beginning was a bonfire in the backyard, but was the back of the garage on fire. Realized how long it took for a truck to get there, figured I better help out. So I've been there ever since for 18 years. I have a wife and two teenage boys. Throughout their years in Brooklyn Park, I've coached in the CDAA for football. I've coached in the BPAA for several years, from seven to when they're 12, to now then in the Brooklyn Area Babe Ruth Association for baseball. I also own a business in Brooklyn Park. My wife and I have a home healthcare business. We take care of many seniors, all the way down from infants through all ages of age, so that they can stay in their home as opposed to going to a nursing home or assisted living. We also own in Brooklyn Park Under the Weather Sick Child Care Center, which is the only sick childcare center in the state of Minnesota. We take care of working parents so that they have a place to bring their child when your school or daycare won't take them. In that, we just started a pay-what-you-can-afford method so that people can bring it in and virtually no cost to them so they can drop their child off. I really care about the City of Brooklyn Park. I've been a council member back in 2005 to 2008. And if you go back and look in history, you'll see where my voting comes from. Thank you.
Thank you very much, candidates. We are now going to begin our questions and I wanted to explain that each question, we will call on the candidates in different orders so the same person doesn't go first or last each time. For our first question, George Lassard will go first, then James Jackson. Oh, excuse me, I think it's confusing the columns here. First will be Mark Maida. Second will be James Jackson and third will be George Lassard. And each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. And Sheena Hussein will ask the first question.
Good evening. Our first question is Shakopee is proposing to raise its minimum wage for new businesses getting subsidies to $19 an hour. And it looks like a $15 minimum wage will be on the November ballot for Minneapolis. What minimum wage requirements would you support for Brooklyn Park?
Thank you. As far as minimum wage requirements for the City of Brooklyn Park, I don't feel it's my job as a council member to press upon businesses in our city to govern a minimum wage. The state of Minnesota has a minimum wage. If we're gonna make a minimum wage policy, we need to make it statewide. To make it happen in one city and not another city, it's gonna create a problem. I'll follow the smoking ban. Many businesses were affected by the smoking ban that affected Hennepin County until everybody on state got on board with it. It was very difficult for the businesses in Hennepin County. They were all complaining, they had no patios, they couldn't get this, smoking couldn't be outside. So as far as minimum wage, if you put something in our city that's not going to be in all the surrounding cities, you're gonna have a problem with our labor force and the rest of the workforce. There right now is some state services that at that dollar value, there's people who would not get help because the contracted service rate is not that dollar value. Thank you.
Shakopee is proposing to raise its minimum wage for new businesses getting subsidies to $19 an hour. And it looks like a $15 minimum wage will be on the November ballot for Minneapolis. What minimum wage requirements would you support for Brooklyn Park?
Great. Minimum wage, again, I believe it, and not to piggyback off Mark, but I do believe it's a statewide issue. City of Brooklyn Park, I believe, should focus more on the quality of jobs that we bring to the city as opposed to the pay rate. The pay rate is gonna be dependent on the quality of job. You know, I don't think that a person or any of our residents should actively go out searching for minimum wage jobs. We should search for jobs that we are qualified for. I understand that some jobs may be minimum wage, but I don't think that the City of Brooklyn Park should press upon a keep-up-with-the-jones mentality from a different city, in my personal opinion. However, I can actively say that a part of being on the city council, it won't just be our opinions. We're there with 700 people, including the mayor. And although these are our opinions tonight that we're expressing, keep in mind that this is a collective decision and hopefully you all can respect the individual opinions
So I'll agree with my two gentlemen next to me. But what we didn't hear is if you raise rates, taxes go up because if you're gonna mandate it, you gotta pay for it. So it is a state issue, it should not be a local issue. But looking at the jobs that are out there, I have a 20-year-old son that came back from college and decided he was gonna join the workforce. So I sat down and said, well, here's what you're qualified to do because you have a half a semester of college. Here's what we can figure out, you're strong, great work ethic, so let's look at the trades. I talked to friends that are in the trades, they're screaming for people to work. Six trades interviewed my son, the lowest rate was $18 an hour for no skills. All he had to do was tote around something heavy and learn. Work ethic, willing to learn, that's what we need to look at. What's here and let's take care of ourselves.
Thank you very much, candidates. We're gonna go on to the next question and then I'd like our real moderator to come up. He's here now and he will continue to be the moderator for the rest of this forum. Our next question will begin with George Lassard, then Mark Maida will follow, and third will be James Jackson. And Christina Chen will ask the question.
Good evening. The shootings of people of color by law enforcement has been all over the news lately. This is a concern especially since people of color are now the majority in Brooklyn Park. What is your stance on ensuring that law enforcement are properly trained so that police brutality does not happen here?
It's an interesting question and I'll bring 12 years of background. I was a K-9 cop in the Air Force for 12 years. People understand that we show up when something's wrong, we show up when somebody violates somebody or has a traffic. Nobody calls you over to say, hey, you want a cup of coffee and you want to sit down and enjoy a little conversation. So unfortunately, when cops show, there's already a bias of why they're there. Now, with what we're seeing in the media, I believe in getting all of the facts before I make a decision. That's my training, that's my skill set. I do know that I was trained to make decisions in a split second, both in an act of war if I was sent or patrolling the streets. So what we need to look at is truly, what does a police officer or fire department or ambulance person do? What do they have to do every day? What are they trained to do? And then let's get all of the facts and move forward.
Thank you for the question. I believe that we as a states and a society give somebody the right to hold a gun. We give them a right to hold a gun to protect me, my family. I also have a right as a person to respect the person who holds a gun. I have to assume that they're acting in my best situation. Are there individuals out there who are allowed to carry a gun that maybe don't act in the best situation correctly? Yes, I believe that. I think amongst every trade, amongst every walk of life, there's somebody who doesn't follow the steps properly. I know that I teach my children, when a police officer says to stop, you stop. I teach them to have to respect it. If there's something that goes wrong, then let me know later. I think the communication's gonna be the key in our police staff and from our administration, the police chief coming all the way down, to make sure everybody is trained in the aspects of protecting people, no matter who they are. Thank you.
Well, I'm not gonna pretend like I don't look like a lot of the victims of what we're seeing in the news recently. However, that doesn't give us an excuse. We can do better as citizens. Our first responders can do better as we go out. What I can do, if elected, is ensure that our first responders are properly trained and up to date with how to react to different situations. I can be the bridge of the community relationship to first responders, to police, to fire, to ambulance, to medical, to everything. I'm not saying I can fix it, but what I am saying is that I'm willing to do that. And what I can do is just provide more information. You know, as a registered gun owner, we are trained to do certain things in certain situations when you encounter a police officer. Community members should know that. You should know how to respond when a police officer encounters you and vice versa. And although we do see things in the media, I can't make a judgment based on what we see, but I think we all can do better.
Thank you, candidates. I would now like to introduce our moderator, Wayne Doe. Would you please come forward? Wayne is a treasurer of Think Again Minnesota and he's a division director for Toastmasters and he works for the Minnesota Health Department in health operations. And he will continue to call on the candidates to ask the questions. Wayne, we have a order here, I've got the candidate's names written on the left-hand side and you just need to call on them in the order that they're written. Thank you. The third question will be asked by Yaumei Zhang.
I thought Carol was doing a good job, didn't you think so? So far. Anyway, we'll just continue.
Good evening, everybody. The third question for the candidates are, what kinds of development along the light rail would contribute to economic diversity and opportunity?
I think it's my turn to go first. So I sat in on a presentation, I can't remember the name of the organization, but there was a bunch of artists that presented and they had such phenomenal vision about at every stop presenting a different aspect of something that relates to the city. I thought that was one of the coolest things that I've seen. I also was, when Michelle and I were in Maple Grove and we saw this display of chalk art. And to me, it was just a representation of how diverse the community was. I think a lot of those things can happen. I think a lot of small mom-and-pop businesses can pop up along those light rails. I think that we can have more display of what our city consists of. Brooklyn Park is the sixth largest city in the state of Minnesota and is the number one for its diversity. And we need to represent that. We have, I believe, one of the largest Hmong populations in Laos itself and a Liberian population and a lot of African populations and we should definitely represent that along that light rail.
So before we get to the next question, the next candidate, before we get to the next candidate, I'm sorry. The forum is actually nonpartisan and our hope was that when you come in here, we don't want to bring any campaign literature or buttons or anything. So if you have anything that shows what your campaign is all about, please remove it at this time, okay? And then we'll continue with the forum. So there will be no campaign buttons or campaign materials or items that should be shown, including the candidates.
Name tags? Name tags?
I think he was talking to me.
No name tags?
No, name tags, fine.
Oh, your name tags, right.
Oh, I think that's campaign.
Wait, wait, no name tags either, no buttons.
No buttons?
Yeah.
Okay, great, great. So we turn to the next candidate to answer the question.
So development along light rail in Brooklyn Park, as I mentioned in the opening, much the same as James. We've got five stops. That's one of the most stops in a single city. But I think when we look at what we have, the opportunity to build, why not we go out and commission people in Brooklyn Park to kids in schools, kids, you know, people that are artists within the community and say, let's build something and let's put your work on display. Let's teach somebody at each stop, something different. One about the Hmong community, one about the Liberian community, one about Brooklyn Park's history as a whole. We can't forget about that. Where did we start? This is something that we can talk about. Put it all along the light rail. And that way, when somebody stops there, they get a read about us. The next piece is zoning. Residential over retail is another great way to bring different things to the community that we don't currently have.
For the stops along the light rail, first, they're each gonna be in their own area. We need to find groups from each of those areas, since it's going to be going through their backyard, and solicit their opinion. What would they like to see there? Not every resident is in favor of the light rail going through that part of town. But we have to make sure that when we're done, the project is done correctly, assuming that it all follows its path and it's still a little bit away, to make sure that at the end of the day, it still follows the path it's supposed to follow. But then get the input from the people in that area. This may be an opportunity for housing projects to go up there. It's gonna be an opportunity for different developmental areas to go there so that people who are working downtown now have a place to live and stay on the suburb other than where they are. Currently right now, it's mostly just residential houses and commercial retail. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate that the forum tonight is nonpartisan. We'll go back to the questions, the next question that's coming up, okay?
What would be your signature initiative for Brooklyn Park?
Believe that would come back to me first. Signature initiative. Brooklyn Park houses four major thoroughways through it or around its edges. 694, 252, 169, 610. Currently right now, we're watching one-story office buildings going up there, warehouse-type buildings. Those need to be marquee, landmark buildings, major company headquarters to make us a flagship. Right now, we're bringing in 100 people in a warehouse operation. We should be bringing in 1,000. You bring 1,000 people into a building, they're gonna want a place to eat for lunch. When they create a place to eat for lunch, all of us have a place to eat for dinner. That's my signature, is to develop around those areas, change some of what we're doing. Right now, look at 169, some awesome buildings over there, but they're one-story. They're not bringing in the tax base. One-story tax base is a box of dollars. Five-story tax base is a truckload of dollars. That saves all of us who live here with a bigger tax base.
What I would like to do is, and we all live here, so we're not, no one's new to this, but I'd like to remove the stigma of north of 85th and south of 85th. I want to desegment the entire city. I understand we're doing a ton of phenomenal things at ByTarget and we're doing a ton of phenomenal things on the light rail, but to me, that is segmenting us and that is dividing the community as a whole. The biggest initiative I want to do is, like I said, remove those stigmas. How we do that, it's the same thing Mark mentioned. I think we can work with business forward advisories to remove some of the barriers that the small businesses have for starting up, startup businesses, working with the business forward, I'm sorry, working with the Economic Development Authority to ensure that all the actual opening roles that we have are inclusive of the community so that we represent those folks along the entire workforce so that the City of Brooklyn Park can truly be a place where we live, grow, and reinvest.
Could you kind of speak directly into the mic? We're recording, so I want to get your voice.
So signature initiative, I've already spoken about working with businesses to touch base in our schools. So we have to think about what our future is. Our future is our kids. So why don't we take what we have business-wise, reinvest in our kids, reinvest in our schools, not stop at the college level or the trade school level, let's go down to the high school level. High schools teaching trades. Get these community or these businesses that are coming in to provide opportunities to say, hey, here's an internship for the summer. Most college kids get internships. Why couldn't high school kids get an internship? Turn around, bring that focus back, bring great work to our people, bring great opportunities for growth, focus on things and then say, this is who we are and this is how we're gonna
We will take the next question. Again, a reminder, as you listen to the candidates and you want to write your questions down, just do so on the card. just do so on the card, raise your hand, and there will be someone to come along and collect those cards. Thank you.
The question is, how will you make a difference in the immigrant community in equitable employment, housing, and benefits?
I don't really consider Brooklyn Park an immigrant community. I think we're a diverse community. We're all, we all came here for a reason. We all started somewhere else. Some of us were born here, some of us weren't. I came from California, I'm here. I think if we turn around and say, here's the jobs, let's, I'm a consultant, so I'd go to a company and say, find me a job. What if we put a job hub right here in Brooklyn Park and said, here's all the jobs in Brooklyn Park. You can ride to it, you can take a bus to it, you can walk to it. You don't even have to leave your city to have a good-paying job. We've got companies here that have trades. You can learn a trade. You can learn a skill set. You can work your way up. I don't think it's, I think it's opportunities. I don't think it's equality. It's, I need to have that opportunity to start my life, if I'm just coming out of high school or just coming out of college. That's what we need.
First, we need to start with having the jobs. That starts with getting companies in here that are going to build themselves. My own, I happen to employ 350 employees, and still increasing. Majority of them come from Brooklyn Park. They have step-up jobs, they move from there. I can't find a nurse. There's a shortage. I'm taking the workers we have out in the field and saying, I'll pay for your education. I'll get you to be a nurse, because there's a short shortage. That's just me as one company. You start finding several companies in the city of Brooklyn Park that are coming in here going to provide jobs for us. Not bringing in jobs that are coming from other places in the state, the high-end stuff, where it's not the group of people who need to start off and work somewhere. People start off in mailrooms, move themselves up to management, and up, and up, and then pretty soon they're on their own and owning their own company. That's the American dream. If we provide the places where people can get the employment, everyone, we have jobs. Thank you.
You know, I mentioned the Economic Development Authority, and I mentioned, and what I'm hearing up here, but to me, it's all recipient. I think we as a community, especially immigrant community, and it's not just immigrant community, we need to be more proactive. I think one thing that we can do is provide education, provide education on how to update those resumes, how to perform in interview processes, so that you can go out and capture those jobs. I get, the city's developing, we're going to get jobs. They're going to come eventually. But are we going to be prepared when those jobs come? To me, that's the more important question. And for the immigrant community, what I think we can do all better is just be more prepared for when those jobs do come, that we're more, that we're prepared for, and that we know exactly what it is we want, we know exactly what our rights are, and we know exactly what we're qualified for, so that we can go in and capture those jobs and increase that economic growth.
Great. Before we go to the next question, now you see me stepping up here maybe every moment or so, when the candidates are answering, because we just want to reiterate some of the things that we'd like to see tonight. Tonight, I mentioned when I came out that we have the media presence, so they're recording this exclusively. We will not allow cameras to be taking pictures or doing any other recording. So please respect that. Next question.
The question is, what are your plans to support our aging population?
For me, you know, as a next-generation leader in the city, and as a millennial, you know, I definitely want to attract younger and more family-oriented people who are willing to invest in the city of Brooklyn Park. Now, at the same time, that means we have to take care of our aging population. I think the city does a great job now of providing up-to-date facilities, or facilities. I don't know how up-to-date they are, I haven't really done the investigation in that, but that could be one thing we do, is provide more investigations into the facilities and make sure that they're comfortable, that there's enough for the aging population, and that it's more affordable, so that, you know, those, and I'm not going to say it's a burden on the families, because parents and grandparents, the previous generation has done a lot for us, and it's our responsibility to take care of them, but at the same time, it's going to come with a cost. So ensuring that we can provide those facilities at a reasonable price is one thing that's extremely important to me, because I would want it to happen when Michelle and I get over.
So, supporting the aging community. Brooklyn Park does have several facilities or several homes that people can move into as they get older, and there's a waiting list. When I lived in Candlewood, my neighbor across the street waited two and a half years to get into a facility that his wife could get the full-time care that she needed. They were in their 80s. But looking at what he was doing every single day, I looked at my son and said, hey, why don't you go over and help him out? So, we have to look beyond the homes or the high-rises that we build for, or see your citizens, look around your community and say, hey, I have a neighbor that doesn't want to move, and they don't have to, but we can reach out and say, can we do something for you? When I was in the military and we deployed soldiers overseas, we had families here. We had families that ran horse farms, large businesses, and their wives and dependents and children weren't used to their breadwinner not being there. So, we look back, and we had a family support center that turned around and said, I know every single person that has a member deployed.
To support the aging, this is kind of a, I think a double-edged sword for me here. My job, my passion is keeping seniors in their home as long as I can. They earned that house. They lived in that house, they grew their kids up in that house. Where do they go when often they now can't reside in their own house? We have some good quality places in Brooklyn Park, but those also good quality places come with a cost. So therefore, we need to have more of them. We need to have more that are able to take different income levels of people into those places, so they have a place to go. But the, I consider myself aging every year. I moved from Brooklyn Park, I grew up in Brooklyn Park, to Brooklyn Park, I moved again to Brooklyn Park. I plan on continuing in Brooklyn Park. At some point, I'm going to need a place where I won't be able to live in my own house also. So, to put those in areas where they're safe, they're affordable, I know where they all are. I've been to calls with them. So, again, thank you.
Well, we have time for one more question for this segment, and after that, we have the candidates give their closing statements.
Please provide your understanding of the difference between equality and equity, as it might pertain to equitable development, equitable housing, and/or racial equality, or racial equity.
Equitable and equality. They ultimately revolve around the word, what is fair? What is fair for everyone? Regardless of what your income is, what your way of life is, what, how you grew up, your culture, your sex, everything. What is fair? What is fair should be fair for everyone. When you start to jump into words, we're grabbing two words and trying to make them use a term, but to me, it really revolves around what is fair? And to be fair is, all three of us get the same treatment, no matter where we go, no matter what we do, no matter what we say. It's just fair. And I think if you're fair, and everybody has that opportunity, you have both. Thank you.
This is a double-edged sword. Equitable, equal. Everyone starts somewhere, and then you set a goal, and you say, this is where I want to be. This is where I want to go. So, what we need to do is be able to provide opportunities. Look at growth, look at businesses, look at rules, look at parks, look at houses. Make sure the older homes that can be affordable, that somebody's starting out, are still in good shape. So when they move in, it doesn't look like it's run down and 100 years old. So, reinvesting into the older part of the community that enables somebody to branch out on their own, move out on their own, and start their own family, is what we need to do to provide an equal opportunity, and then bring it back. Equitable, again, find a goal, work towards it. I made a promise to myself, when I could afford another house, I built it. But the house I lived in, I loved it. I did what I needed to do to make it our own, and that was my goal, and that's what I think everyone should have.
Being equitable and having equality just depends on what you value. I mean, if you're equating how equitable you are to someone else's value, you may or may not ever be equal. To George's point, understanding what it is, what you want and what goal you want to achieve, is what's going to be the most important. Comparing yourself to someone else, or what you see, is not going to ever be sustainable. You're never going to have the best. You're never going to, there's always going to be somebody else who may be a step behind you or a step in front of you. And to me, equality starts with understanding what it is where you want to be. And if you're okay where you want to be, nothing else can get in your way.
Thanks. Well, you know, in Brooklyn Park, like, the national election for president, we get the opportunity to choose our candidates, first through a primary process, and then we go to the general election. And that's why we have, when we have more than one candidate, that's a great opportunity. And you, as voters, have the opportunity now, as you assess your candidates and ask questions, and that feedback, and comments, they are still an opportunity to get out there, learn more about the candidates, right? The primary election is on August 9. We encourage you to let others know, to vote during the primary, because in the primary, we have only, we have only two people we need to select that will go for the general election. At this time, I want to thank our candidates for your participation tonight and your patience. We have another segment with the West District coming up, so we encourage you to also stay, because what you learn from here, you become experienced, at least because our district, cross-district, you'll be able to effect some change and have some influence in the decisions that you make to elect your city council members. Again, thank you very much, and in about five minutes, we'll reconvene. One more thing. Yes, the closing statement.
Well, I personally just want to thank, again, everybody for coming out tonight. I'm sure I can speak for George and Mark, that this is extremely important for everybody. As important is for you all to understand from us what our responsibilities are. We are going to expect that you all actually go out and do your due diligence as well, learn about us, learn about our campaigns, and go out and vote. Because although we have a ton of people in the room, voter turnout in this city has always been a struggle, and we need to have everyone flip that ballot over. You can't just go vote for Trump or Clinton. We need you to turn it over and flip down the list, vote down the list. I personally, again, don't vote for me for any other reason besides that you think that I can fulfill what needs to be done in this city. But as much responsibility that we have, we are also putting that same responsibility back on you. And if you want to host any yard signs or anything, let Michelle know.
I do appreciate you coming out. This is, again, you're the reason that I'm up here. I chose to get involved and invested in the community, and seeing you here asking those questions means that you're doing the exact same thing. My platform is simple and direct. I want to create a stronger, more vibrant, safer community for everyone to live in, everyone to prosper, keep it here, and make it better. So, revitalize the parts that have been forgotten, revitalize the parts that are a little older, find things, and bring businesses here that'll help us keep our community safe, happy, healthier. Code enforcement's important. And then, again, for the last thing, is just get out and vote. Whoever you choose up here isn't the wrong choice, isn't the right choice, it's your choice. So, please do.
Thank you. Follow-up, saying thank you very much, everybody, for showing up. First thing I'll copy with George here is, get out and vote. Before I ever did anything for city council, over 10 years ago, I never knew about primaries. I never knew I could weed down candidates down to two. Therefore, I know this, and I do vote after that in every election for a primary, because it is my job to be informed and do it. So, everybody in this room, awesome, thank you. Second of all, I started out, I've been on city council already. I'm going to start off-ground running. I know how to get things done, I know who to talk to, I know what to do. This isn't a learning curve for me. I'm not going to spend a year trying to figure out what departments do what, what does this, what does that. My job there is reduce your taxes. I run a business, a large business. I want to cut your taxes down. There's a lot of inefficiencies. My wife and I run an awesome business. We're very efficient, and we do it very well. Third, I want to bring business development to the city, to get us out of a bedroom community paying our taxes. Second, third, public safety. We will be the most protected department for police, most educated department for police to take care of its citizens, everyone. Thank you.